Discussion on the motion. The motion before we call a roll call vote, Ms. Wagner, just one more time is we wanted to share our confidence in the superintendent, even as we are focused on the areas where she and all of us can improve. Ms. Wagner, would you call that vote, please?
Ms. Fulton?
Abstain.
Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett? Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. We'll now return back to our agenda. The next item we have here is three-month forward priorities. We look forward to having an update in September, once we've had some more time to flush those out. We'll move right along then to the superintendent's update, which is item C.
Thank you, President Lindy. Just one brief update for tonight, and I know that we have several of our Woodward alum and staff that are here with us, so let's recognize Woodward as they are here with us. So I would like to share that I don't think that it's a secret for anyone, any one of us that are part of the board and superintendent team, anyone that is, that has worked at Woodward, that's a alum that's watching or in the community. This has been a very challenging year for Woodward, for Woodward students, for their staff, for the entire community that is around Woodward. It started early on in the school year, and I think that I would like to publicly and personally, as I've done, as I've met with the staff at the school, applaud them for what they have done at the school, for how they have remained focused on our students, even as challenges were coming into their building, not necessarily starting in the building, but were coming into the building, how they rallied around the students and they supported them, and they continue to support them and to support each other. And I think that that should be commended of them as well, so we can please give them a round of applause for that also. I also would like to recognize, at a time, we started at a very challenging time at Woodward at the beginning of the year, as we did not have a staff member in place. I do want to recognize Mr. Workman, who accepted a charge from us to leave an environment that he enjoyed at another school, and to go to Woodward as the interim principal at the school to really try to stabilize the environment. Working with him, working with our district team, a lot of presence at the school, but there is a lot more that still needs to happen. So I think most of you know, I sent an email to the staff, I did include the alumni association leadership in that as well, after we realized that Mr. Workman did decide to take a position in another district that more closely relates to the things that he's looking to do moving forward. We have to support him in that, because he has done quality work for Woodward this year. While it is not required, as we think about an interim role, generally, in this practice, with my practice, and has been past practice this year by the board, generally, the interim is identified, is brought to the board for support, but it doesn't really go through the leadership at the school as we place an interim in the school building. This, with this interim placement, we are, we do have two candidates, actually, board members, two candidates, that we will be taking to the LSDMC for their input as an interim for Woodward going into this year. Why are we doing that? Because Woodward has gone through a lot this past year, and we would like to make sure that we have some input from the Woodward team around the person that they are going to work with as we go through the year of finding, of making sure that we have the best possible placement at the school to lead the building. And so we're in that process right now. I don't know if there are any LSDMC members that are here. There were dates that have been set up with Human Resources for those actual, for the actual meetings with the two candidates. There is a third that is in the periphery, but we're not sure that that person, who has also been at the school before, but we're not certain that that is the direction that they are looking to go because of the role that they're filling at another one of the schools in our district. So just wanted to share that with you. The first, that's the first thing. I think the second thing is, I'm not sure where it started, but last week, we received several calls here at the district office about whether or not we were planning to close Woodward. And I just want to emphatically say, and I think the board will also give their support as we, as we share the same, there have been no discussions by me, no recommendations by me, no requests of me from the board to do any level of closure with Woodward, not one discussion. So I'm not sure where that information got misconstrued just a little bit, that is not the case. I think it is the case that we all know and understand that Woodward is one of our schools in the district that we all have to wrap our arms around, because we do have to stabilize what's happening at Woodward right now, and it will take all of us to make certain that that occurs. So just wanted to give that particular update. We do anticipate that by our next meeting, if not before, I think we have a cow in between, so if there's an opportunity, we may be able to move forward superintendent recommendations during that time, President Lindy, if we have those, if we have cow.
Next cow will be meet August, after the eight, seven.
Okay, then it will come August the seventh.
Correct.
So at our August the seventh meeting, it is our goal that we will be moving forward a candidate right now. Right now, the two that we're looking at for interim, one has been a principal before in a very challenged environment, and I say it that way, Woodward is the kind of school that I led as a principal, so it holds a soft place in my heart. And the other candidate is a person that has served as an AP at Woodward in the past as well. So just wanted to provide that as an update.
Thank you very much. So as we turn now to the next item on our agenda here, we're going to do our hearing of the public. I understand from our policy chair, Mr. Morosky, that there might also be some folks waiting to do a resolution later that might be very short. He and I were just chatting, and I think what we'd like to do is give everybody who is here for hearing the public a chance to do that on schedule. But then, if else is willing, we might move them up, so that we can do that quickly and send them home, and then we'll get into the rest of our items. Okay, so some instructions for hearing of the public. Each people will have two minutes, and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you'll be invited to enter if you are online. Please click the camera icon to go interactive, and again, provide your name, affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and contact information if you'd like a direct response to any question you may have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we do reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, if you are online, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful of all listeners. Thank you. Whether it's Rob or Mr. Hoing or somebody, do we have any online speakers?
We have one online speaker.
One, okay. So we have a number of in-person folks. We're going to do our in-person folks first. We will have our online person go next to last, and I'm just looking to see if there's a form here from CFT President Julie Sellers. There is. Actually, the last. So we're going to start, I'm going to read three people's names, and if all three could come down, it will help transition between people more quickly, and I'll just add that next third person so they can start their way down, okay? So our first three in-person are going to be Eddie Hawkins, Joel Mueller, and Gail Urban. Again, that's Eddie Hawkins, Joel Mueller, and I think Gail Urban. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins, you can start whenever you are ready. You wanted to go in a different order? I don't have any problem with that. Does anybody have any interns? He's just asking if he can go next to last for Julie. Great, that sounds lovely, so we're going to keep moving. We'll come back to Mr. Hawkins. We have Joel Mueller, followed by Gail Urban, followed by Shirley Braim. Thank you.
Well, I'm here for the resolution for a request for a waiver for alcohol for an event that we're, excuse me, that we're doing at the SCPA building. We're doing, the event's going to be called Lionheart Jam. It's a benefit event where all the proceeds will be donated to the Starshine Hospice through Cincinnati Children's Hospital. I had personal experience with Starshine last year, for which we did not receive a bill. So this event is going to allow us to give a little bit back. We plan to have a couple of local fans. One of the members from Blessed Union of Souls will be there. And so we're requesting permission for alcohol, including beer and wine, to help us support those funds.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Gail Urban, followed by Shirley Braim, followed by Jeff Urban.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gail Urban. I'm a high school career tech teacher at Woodward, and I'm also a union rep for CFT. And I'm coming to speak to you about security at Woodward. Woodward has thirty-seven doors. Of the thirty-seven, only thirty have alarms on them. Some of our classrooms, the panic buttons do not work, but if a teacher's in distress and need to hit the panic button, the information does not go to the office. And security. Currently, we're going to be down three to four security personnel moving into this school year. And we would like to see that taken care of, but what we don't want is security who've gotten in trouble at other schools coming to Woodward. We've dealt with that situation in the past, and it's not a good one. And cameras. I know we have at least a hundred-plus cameras. All of them are not clear, trying to recoup activities that happen when security go take a look, has been really challenging. And that's really big safety concerns for students, teachers, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Shirley Braim, followed by Jeff Urban, followed by Kelly Prather.
Hello, my name is Shirley Braim. I am a teacher at Woodward, and I used to be part of the school's leadership team for the past ten years. I'm coming mainly on behalf of our students. I am concerned about the lack of continuity and administrative leadership, not just in principals and super, I'm sorry, principals and assistant principal, but also office staff. It is not, only does it affect us, our career opportunities for our students, but it also affects the things that they are eligible for and that they so richly deserve. We know it will change for the better their trajectory in their lives. Not only as a CTE department chair, but even as a school teacher and just loving being at Woodward. We're still having problems getting agreements, MOUs, internships, work-based learning opportunities, and job shadowing delays due to a lack of not only supplies that we need to train our students with, but also signatures, and that is just truly a travesty. We want our students to come back to school, and we want them ready to learn and just to be able to be a student, to be able to leave whatever that they have at the door, because we already know our students come with challenges. We want them to walk into a safe, structured, secure, and scholastic environment that is solid. Woodward students, via all the things that we can provide to them, we need them to be ready for them. So if we want them to stay ready, so that they can be ready to learn with positive opportunities that they have to latch on to, we need to be ready tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jeff Urban, followed by Kelly Prather, followed by Joe, I think it's SPEI, and then I'm going to miss the rest, but Joe, you're next.
Hello, my name is Jeff Urban, I was studies teacher at Woodward Technical High School, former assistant athletic director and former head coach of track and field. Coming to talk to you about the athletics at Woodward since I've been there. Woodward has been promised several things, dealing with our field, athletic field. We were supposed to be the hub for the track and field for the district. Our football field was like bleachers for quite some time. All of this has been a detriment to the school and to the student body for a simple reason that we know that our students fare well when they are actively involved. And if they're not having the proper facilities or the proper equipment, whatnot, then they are less likely to become a part and be involved, invested into the school. Some of the concerns, as I mentioned before, about some of the promises that were made to Woodward, replacement of the speakers on the field, the scoreboard, replacement of the deteriorating track, that's a mention for the bleachers, and things of that nature, as well as facilities at school and keeping them up. So that is my concern, that the board, the district, are really looking to move forward and bring these promises that was going to stow to us to fruition.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Kelly Prather, followed by Joe S., followed by Stefan Pryor.
Good evening. To the superintendent, to the board members and the administration, thank you all so much for giving me this opportunity to speak. Today, I did come in support of Superintendent Irona the Wright. But before I do that, I will say that I'm a proud Withrow Tiger, a graduate of Withrow CPS grad, but I am extremely happy to see that Woodward also has a strong alumni. It speaks to the fact that the community cares about the students. So again, you know, I just want to thank them for coming out. My concern with what's going on in Woodward is basically, was basically my concern for what has taken place at Taff High School. We don't want that to happen. We don't want a repeat. But as far as Superintendent Wright, what I'm keeping in from the community is that, you know, you're from outside of the city, as you know, and that you need to get to know the inner workings of the city, and please hire from the van. We have well-qualified professionals in this area who can do everything that anyone who comes outside, from outside of the city, can do, and I want you to look at some of the dynamic professionals that we have here. But in your support, I know that as far as you engaging with the community, you came out and supported black-owned businesses at the African-American Chamber Exchange, and so that spoke to who you were. You also, you're also very active with Black Political 101, Ozzy Davis, and the amazing Iris Rowley, who was here today, so I thank you. So for those of you who have decided to abstain from giving a vote of confidence in our superintendent, or anyone who would have decided to say, no, we're not going to support you, I think that that would have been so inappropriate. She just started, and what I don't want to happen as a black professional is I don't want her to undergo what most black professionals have to deal with in this city. They come in, they work really, really hard, but they micromanage, and then they're denigrated, so I want to encourage them to continue to support our superintendent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Joe S., followed by Stefan Pryor, followed by Louis Arnold.
Good evening. My name is Joe Spire.
I apologize, thank you.
Happens all the time. I'm a native of Cincinnati. I currently live in Clifton. I'm retired. I spent twenty years developing software independently, and twenty years teaching. I taught three years in the Systems Analysis Department at Miami University. And then seventeen years I taught in various private secondary schools. My area of expertise is computer science, math, and I did spend some time teaching German and Latin. I'm very concerned about what's coming down the road. It's right in the middle of the road right now. It's called ChatGPT, which I'm sure you've all heard of. I'd like to know, and if I can help in any way, I certainly will, if Cincinnati School Board has come up with some strategies for embracing this technology or from, or for preventing its use in the classroom. I think this is especially an issue for English teachers who are trying to teach students to write. They will not be able to recognize inauthentic from authentic writing. I've been, the past month, I've spent most of my time just experimenting with it, and the results are really mind-boggling. And I think, I want this city to get behind this and figure it out. So I have a question. Is there something, is there a committee set up that's investigating this? If so, if I can help out, I'd like to be a part of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just fire, thank you. Next, we have Stefan Pryor, followed by Louis Arnold, followed by our online speaker.
How y'all doing?
Good.
I'm here today to talk about Ms. Wright. Ms. Wright, man, forty years, eleven months in Detroit as assistant regional superintendent. Three years, also, I see. Mrs. Wright has been proving track record for success. I don't need to talk to you about what you done, let me talk to the audience. Uh, Mrs. Wright, twenty-eight superintendent for Cincinnati Public Schools, twenty-five years as a teacher, assistant vice principal, a regional superintendent, served a hundred and seventeen thousand students, thirteen thousand employees. She's the city, city year champion, a woman of excellence, by the Michigan Chronicle, chief of change, future chief, leadership and development. Of course, you gonna have some haters, sister. That's part of your, your success of what you doing right now, sister. You gotta be strong of what you doing, sister, what you going through, because you gonna have haters always around you. You think that you're friends, but they really ain't. This city been like this for many years. Somebody should have warned you and told you how they are from the school board, from the council meetings, and so-called, so-called our, 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 our city leaders, they do the same thing with each other. They keep throwing black people up under the bus, left and right, right and left. We gotta stop this, y'all. We keep doing this to ourselves. We get in these positions to honor our people. We black people throwing each other up under the bus because of the positions you in. I'm not mad up here, I'm just excited about things I go through in life, and I see this journey I've been going through from the old school board. It's the same thing, ain't nothing new up under the sun. What has been will be again, what has been done will be done again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you back. I love you, and nothing you can do about it, all right?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks, brother.
Next, we have Louis Arnold, followed by our online speaker.
My name is Louis Arnold. I'm a member of the Alumni Association. I'm a member of the Woodward Endowment Fund, and I'm also a volunteer track coach at Woodward High School. I'm gonna give you a history lesson. William Woodward was born in seventeen sixty-eight, near Plainfield, Connecticut. He moved to the settlement, which is today Cincinnati. Woodward was the first public school in the country. It was the oldest school in the city, and was the first major public school in the city, opening in eighteen thirty-one. Its significance in history, and when you neglect history, it's a bad mark on each and every one that neglects it. Woodward was to provide free education for poor children who could not afford private schooling. President William Howard Taff, who graduated from Woodward High School in eighteen seventy-four, laid the cornerstone of the third building which opened in nineteen ten. In nineteen fifty-three, Woodward High School moved to Bon Hill, designed to serve post-war surge in population in the suburbs of Bon Hill, Gulf Manor, Roseline, Harthwell, and Carthage. The school over the years has produced many who have impacted our city, our state, and our country. Ted Berry, first black mayor of Cincinnati, Woodward High School graduate. NAACP president. William Howard Taff, president, Woodward High School graduate. Mark Mallory, mayor of Cincinnati, Woodward High School graduate. Dr. Odell Owens, Woodward High School graduate. Cotty Johnson, city council, presently, Woodward High School graduate. Darryl Boston, Major League Baseball. Ezra Charles, world boxing champion, Woodward High School graduate. John Jackson, NFL. Dante Craig, Golden Glove champion. Leon Norman, the list goes on. And I would encourage you to research Woodward Endowment Fund and also the Woodward Trust Fund. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have next our online speaker. Yes. Followed by Eddie Hawkins, followed by Julie Sellers.
The recent, can you hear me? Thanks. We have two online speakers. Jennifer Myrie is first. Go ahead, Ms. Myrie.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening from the Cincinnati NAACP. I'm Jennifer Myrie, from the, and the Education Committee Chair, and our president is Mr. Joe Mallory. Tonight, we are communicating with you on behalf of the black and brown students and employees of Cincinnati Public Schools. I would like to publicly congratulate three DPS class of two thousand twenty-three students for their hard work and leadership. Two of the students graduated from Walnut Hills High School and one from Clark Montessori High School. These three black scholars were selected for the two thousand twenty-three NAACP Juanita M. Adams Scholarship. A scholarship award of two thousand dollars will be sent to each of their respective colleges, the Ohio State University, Notre Dame University, and North Carolina A&amp;T. The NAACP scholarships were established by the families of civil rights, Cincinnati Civil Rights Legends, who advocated for Cincinnati students only. This year, we received and reviewed application packets from eight wonderful candidates. However, these three students rose to the top of the list. It was our sincere pleasure to read about their accomplishments and personal goals from these young, black, gifted students of CPS. And we are excited about their future success. Our hope is that the number of eligible students who apply for the NAACP scholarship next school year will double. We would also like to personally thank every CPS faculty and staff member who believed in and nurtured these students. The letters of recommendations that were submitted by the CPS staff offered a belief and a commitment to ensure success, close achievement gaps, and change the trajectory for black students. Congratulations to these students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Collins. Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
Go ahead, Mr. Collins. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The recent inaugural community engagement meeting at Bramble School was really terrific. In effect, it represented the beginning of a turn back towards the model of high-quality, walkable, integrated, community-focused public schools that Greater Madisonville enjoyed for almost a hundred years, starting ten to fifteen years after emancipation. During the first forty of these one hundred years, the Greater Madisonville Public Schools included the children living in the area now called Marimba. Meanwhile, at the national level, the community-focused, walkable, coed, American K-12 model was considered the best in the world. But the question now is, if those two systems of public schools in the USA were so effective, what caused these two models, one local and one national, to fade away? I would argue that the cause was greed. It played itself out through the racism and poverty concentration that's embedded in US housing markets. Now, in Greater Madisonville, this segregation model started when the Marimba Company was launched one hundred years ago. The Marimba Company's first order of business was building a one-hundred percent segregated school on the New US Fifty Highway. The company paid the teachers' salaries. Nationally, after nineteen forty-five, the bankers and real estate speculators, in effect, went national with this Marimba segregation strategy. By the late nineteen nineties, the suburban segregation model overtook the previous model of the walkable, pick-up, walkable, integrated schools. And in more recent years, the segregation model that undermined community life was taken to new heights by privatization, universal vouchers, charters, and evermore busing to maintain racial and class imbalance. So what, what do we do now? For this board, I'd argue that during the next two, three to four years, this board's number-one priority should be to relaunch this quality, desegregated, coed model in the biracial, predominantly white, Massano community. Now, in closing, tomorrow, I'll send you an email. It'll contain some friendly suggestions about how this board can expedite this work to this type of community building, social capital building, and poverty fighting.
Very much.
And walkable, integrated schools can be launched, as I'm starting with Bramble Primary.
Thank you. If that's our last online speaker, we have two folks left. We have Eddie Hawkins, followed by Julie Sellers.
We, the Alumni Association, did not come here to point fingers. We came here for answers to why an institution that we hold very near and dear to our heart is now being looked upon as an unsafe environment. I have received several phone calls from alumni who are, alumni who are requesting answers to questions that we feel contributed to the current state that Woodward is in. Upon Dr. Wallace's resignation in April twenty twenty-two, why was there a four-month gap in selecting of a principal? Why were assistant principals who applied for the position and interviewed never given a call back? Why was Dr. Wallace reinstated one week prior to school starting and then removed one week into the school year? Why, after her removal, was there a three-year gap in the finding of an interim principal? Why, though Ms. Wright met with Mr. Sam Yates, who was, came highly recommended and was willing to return to Woodward, why did that not occur? Why, after three weeks when Mr. Workman was placed at Woodward, he requested additional administration so he could handle the things that needed to be handled, that was denied, and said he would get an assistant principal, we received one six months later? Why was the former Arkansas Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Alicia Smith, who came to CPS to give back and who was a very advocate for Woodward, removed from her high school chief of schools position and moved to the elementary chief of schools? Why have we made several requests for our bus stop to be moved off of Redding Road for obvious safety concerns? Why has that not been addressed? Why was the security improvement suggested by CPS Administrator William Bell, who was a former Cincinnati Police Sergeant of thirty years, not followed up upon? And why was he then demoted and replaced by someone with the third of his experience? Why did our LSDMC, who is the governing body of the school, get it to meet twelve times, only meet three times in twenty twenty-two? Why did Mr. Workman, who rescinded his letter of resignation under the understanding that he would be able to have his staff in place by July first for the twenty twenty-three school year, only to find out that that was not the case? And the assistant administrators who he agreed would be coming to Woodward were no longer going to be coming to Woodward, that left him no choice but to make a professional decision and leave and go to Princeton City Schools as a middle school assistant principal? I would like to say that we, the Alumni Association, is issuing a vote of no confidence in the Board of Education, Ms. Wright and her staff as a whole. We are requesting a ninety-day plan of action in writing within the next seven days. Be submitted to the Woodward Alumni Association.
Thank you very much. Our our last speaker this evening is CFT President Julie Sellers. For those who are not often at board meetings, the contract between the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers and Cincinnati Public Schools grants the CFT president the right to speak at any meeting. Uh, and there's a tradition of that time being both at the end of hearing of the public and without the two-minute time limit.
Good evening and thank you. Um, I would also like to follow up with Woodward. And I agree, there must be a written plan, and it needs to happen prior to school opening. Last year, there were multiple visits to Woodward with no follow-up of an action plan to make that school have the resources that they need to be successful. Woodward must receive the staffing and supports that is necessary to operate successfully. Teachers have told me that this, the district hired first-year teachers without any input or knowledge of their interview teams. So HR hired and placed teachers at Woodward without Woodward interview teams even being told that those positions were going to have positions. There are procedures in place for schools to operate. If they are going to build a team, the professionals who work at Woodward need to be part of those decisions. You cannot expect to turn a school around with an entire new staff year after year after year. They've had over sixty people leave that school in the last two years. Now, the district is not allowing them to follow the district's policies and procedures, and that is what is harming their success. And at some point, we have to come together. The district and the board has policies on how schools are supposed to operate and staff their schools, and those are not being followed. So I totally agree with um um Eddie Hawkins that there needs to be a written plan, and the school needs to know what that is, and they need to make sure that the staffing is in place. Um, there is, I was going through the superintendent's recommendations. I did not get them till afternoon today. They're supposed to come out on Friday. And this evening, you're going to be voting on eight new administrative positions. Five of those do not have a license. And I think it's foolish for you all to vote to hire people who are not licensed. There's no guarantee they're going to get a license. The last board meeting, the majority of the administrators that you voted on to hire were not licensed. We must make sure employees are properly licensed, because it's extremely imperative that we do not de-professionalize this district as we move forward. If we are going to make the gains that we need to make, we need to make sure we have the people in place who are the professionals who know how to do that. And I personally do not believe that unlicensed people who are um being hired as teachers and administrators and um central office staff who are not licensed are what's best for our district. Now, it is your job as a board to know those things. And you are the ones who are voting to hire the people without any kind of checks and balances. I also have questions about the school's funding. There was um a budget update at the last meeting that did comparisons from year nineteen pre-COVID to year twenty-three, and I found some very unusual changes in the budget um between those years. It's hard to track the spending, because everything is constantly being shuffled around, and we can't even figure out and track who is reporting to what department. So how was the budget update developed? And I would like to talk to someone about some of these changes, because I'm hearing that the ESL department, um, their man, their director or manager resigned from the district because the job couldn't be done. And there is talk that they're going to cut a lot of the funding from that department for ESL students, which is the fastest-growing population within our district. But I can't just keep going through these board meetings and stand up here after you all have blessed everything to know even what's going on in the district. People don't even know who to call anymore. And so I just would like to say, we have one month before school starts. That's it. And there's a lot of work to do. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, absent objection from my colleagues, we might move up the first resolution, which is the alcohol waiver for the Starshine Hospice program benefit, so that we could vote on that and get folks home before we do minutes in committee reports. Any objection to taking care of that now? Okay, I know we had one speaker come down. Mr. Morris, I'm just gonna turn it over to you for anything else you feel like we need to cover.
Thank you. So as is customary for those unaware, um, I'm the chair of the policy committee, um, with Ms. Weinberger, Ms. Bolton, serving on that. Typically, what we do is when folks are requesting an alcohol waiver, it's have to bring it to the policy committee, present their idea, which they did first. Um, and then we, all the time, assuming it's by the guidelines, which the